He called me the other day and I was, I was taking care of some business. I couldn't answer the phone. I was actually on another phone doing a check-in with some kids and it was like, and I never got back. No, you know I love that boy. I'll take it. What was it too? Porsche? Audi? Bentley? Oh my God. She did and I'm just like, it's not right. But we don't, you know, you're just like, you're just like, whatever. It's gotta be. I don't always leave your stuff laying around. It's like, I'm pretty sure.
Can you hear me Christine?
Yes, I can hear you.
You can fill out a speaker's card. And I'll call you and you can ask.
Okay, thank you. All right, this time we're gonna resume the meeting of September twenty first, twenty twenty. Uh, Councilmember Lenora, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes.
Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call please.
Mayor Velasquez?
Here.
Councilmember Lenore?
Present.
Councilmember Rizendez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Spencer?
Here.
City Manager Miller?
Here.
City Attorney Apperson?
Here.
Interim Police Chief Reynosa?
Here.
Thank you. The agenda for the City of Hollister City Council Regular Meeting of September twenty first, twenty twenty was posted on the bulletin board on September sixteenth, twenty twenty at eleven fifty eight AM per Government Code Section five four nine five four point two.
Thank you very much. City Attorney, will you please report out from closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council went into closed session to discuss the item agendized for closed session discussion and direction was given to staff. The City Council recessed from closed session at six twenty eight PM. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. We're gonna move to the consent agenda. Are there any items council would like to pull?
I, I have a, a question regarding the F seven. Do you want me to ask it, Mr. Perez? Or will you come up? Cause it's on the consent agenda. So if you have a question, I'll ask it now. A simple question.
Simple question.
I believe it was the clarification that the parade will be two, two days? That's the question. Does anybody know? It'll be a two.
I can't hear you. What, what is that?
Uh, I wanted to know on the reverse parade at the airport.
That, that's not our consent item.
Oh, that's not a consent. I'm sorry, Mayor. I'm sorry. I was wrong. Okay. Excuse me. Thank you.
Is there any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We're gonna move to public input. This is a time for anyone in the audience to speak on any item not on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speaker cards are available in the lobby and are to be completed and given to the city clerk before speaking. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, state your name and city for the record, and speak to the city council. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes with a maximum of thirty minutes per subject. Please note state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda. Do we have any speaker cards tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Uh, Susan Loeb.
Hi, this is Susan Loeb. Nice to see you all. I wanted you to know that the Friends are continuing to support the library in its outreach and virtual services. And we recently finished our first digital newsletter and we're very excited about that. We'll be sharing that with you. And we'll also be participating in the Community Foundation upcoming fundraiser for local nonprofit. So just wanna let you know what we're doing here at the Friends and Library. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you.
I had registered, um, two others. Courtney Evans. Courtney, are you wanting to speak at public comment? If you do, please raise your hand. Is she online? Okay, she's not online. Mary Gilbert? Did you wanna speak? Is she online? Mary, please go ahead.
Yes, I'm lying, sorry. This is Mary Gilbert. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Good evening. Um, I am with the Executive Director of the Council of Governments and I was here tonight. I wanted to just report on some important news that happened at our last COG Board meeting, uh, last Thursday. Um, as my, our partners here at the city know, we've been working with Caltrans, um, and our local partners to develop a strategy to deliver the Highway twenty five four lane widening project. Um, uh, we now have funding available for the project through our Measure G program as well as state funding. Um, and we've been looking at solutions to make sure that we're, we're ready to deliver the best project that we can for the community, um, and to expedite the project schedule. So at our, at our meeting last week, um, the COG Board made an important decision. They, um, reviewed alternatives that had been vetted through a team of, um, of engineers and planners and other, other, um, experts in transportation, um, to look at ways to improve on the project. Um, so, um, they have selected an alternative that, um, gives us the opportunity to now start moving forward more quickly on the, the project environmental review and, uh, and design. And, um, just briefly, uh, the, um, the alternatives that were chosen are to, um, emphasize the interchange at Highway one fifty six and Highway twenty five as being our first, um, uh, primary, uh, quarter of work, um, on the project, um, as well as the, uh, the section of highway from, from San Felipe Road in Hollister to the northward to, to the interchange. So, um, we, uh, will be taking steps now to have an agreement finalized with Caltrans that gets us moving forward on the environmental review for the project and, um, and gets us closer to fully funding it, um, over the next several years. So, um, I just wanted to report on that. It was really exciting news and we're also working on a, a ribbon cutting for, for this stage of the work. So we'll be, um, sending out invitations to the city council for that as well. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you so much for the update.
I have no more speakers for public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We're gonna move to item B one. City Managers' Report.
Nothing to report at this time.
B two, training.
Nothing to report at this time.
We have Tina Garza who wishes to speak on that.
Sorry about that.
Tina, please go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Velazquez and City Councilmembers. Tina Garza, Recreation Supervisor. On Thursday, September third, Recreation Coordinators Nick Marola and Armando Medina attended a virtual leadership summit with the California Parks and Recreation Society. The focus of the summit was to stay front row positive in a balcony negative world. The keynote speaker provided practical ideas, tips, and strategies to live in the front row instead of settling for the negativity. Um, staff learned that it's so easy to focus on the negative during these times but learn strategies to avoid it. Staff also learned, um, in a, staff also listened in on how other recreation agencies are adapting their programs, classes, and events to follow state and local health department requirements. And both of our Recreation Coordinators appreciated the opportunity to attend a virtual summit. They gained knowledge that will help them in their day-to-day situations and provide a positive experience for the residents of the City of Hollister.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tina.
Welcome.
We are gonna now move to item F one.
Thank you, Mayor. On this one, uh, this will, this item would adopt an ordinance to require face coverings and other public health measures and incorporate penalties and for violations of the ordinance. Uh, this ordinance for face covering is based on other eight local agencies that, like the County and City of Monterey, Santa Cruz, and our, our neighbor San Juan Batista. So our recommendation is to read by title only, waive full reading, and adopt ordinance number eleven ninety five, admitting Title Eight Health and Safety by adding chapter eight point zero five face coverings to the Hollister Municipal Code. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
No.
Do we have any speaker cards on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I don't want to interrupt, um, but I'm against the, that mandate.
Vivian Stubblefield?
If you wish to see, fill out a speaker's card and bring it in. I am Vivian Stubblefield from Hollister and I'm against the ordinance number one eleven ninety five, the face coverings. Uh, there is no pandemic in my own opinion and no masks. No masks are u, uh, no masks are useless. No masks are useless as far as I'm concerned. There's no emergency. There is an emergency and that's for our businesses going out of business left and right. And it's just sad to see that. I'm sure it makes some of our leaders happy but for shame. They care to, they care more for, for the, they don't care for the people and they're against the people and they should, they should be for the people. Um, and I, I asked that you leaders would, uh, review your pledges when you took the office to serve the people and be for the people. Thank you.
Maureen Martin?
Hi, my name's Maureen Martin, Mayor Velazco and Council. Um, I'm a business owner in San Juan Batista, which is part of Samhain County. My business has been shut down since March eleventh. We opened for one month. They shut us down again. We do all the protocols and I'm just saying like the mask, I just saw a sign out on, uh, the street of San Juan Batista. They're gonna charge people a hundred dollars in Spanish and English, a little billboard. And I've had, I had four people in one day tell me they're not gonna come back to San Juan to do business with us anymore. Cause if they feel they have to wear a mask out in open air and they just feel violated in that sense where most people wear masks. We wear masks. We do all the protocols. As a salon owner, I just encourage this, this fine thing is really upsetting people. I'm not the person to, you know, be upset because I understand you have a job to do, but we're trying to work and it's diverting business from our cities. And I'm just pleading with you guys. Please don't do fines because most people wear them. Most people don't have a problem with it. And I just, um, just ask right now that you just consider that as part of your, your, um, decisions because it's just driving business away and we want business to come into Hollister, into San Juan. And people were mad, really upset. And I, I can't calm them down. You know what I'm saying? I could do what I could do, but you know what I'm saying? And, and I'm just out of respect. I, we all wear masks. It's out of respect because you don't know if you go home to an elderly person or someone who knows someone who's had, who has had leukemia or cancer treatments or anything like that. So it's out of respect, but I just ask that the fine just not be there because it's making people upset. And yeah, that's all I have to say about that. Help us out in Samhain County and San Juan. Thanks.
Celeste Toledo.
Bo-Kanagro.
Bo-Kanagro? Bo-Kanagro?
Hi, everyone. Good eve, good evening. So, um, I'm a citizen here. I was born and raised in Hollister. Many of you may know me just by my face, not personally know me. So, um, I'm against the mandate. Um, I, I'm also against the mask. You know, many of my posts on social media are against the mask. Do I wear it? Yes, because you know what? I'm a citizen who follows the law. So knowing that following the law is what I do, um, I'm for going into the store wearing my mask to get my essentials, but I'm not for wearing the mask in public while I'm out jogging. Um, I also have health condition which I don't, I won't disclose, but you know, it makes, makes it hard for me to breathe at times. So, um, it's a just, it just, it interrupts my health as well wearing my mask. I want to be able to breathe fresh air, especially if I'm outside. And if, and I don't want to go to the doctor and get a paper that says whatever just to have proof that I'm not, I'm, you know, not able to wear a mask. So I don't agree with the mandate. I do travel to Monterey often. It's one of my favorite places to be. Um, I don't wear the mask. I get there, I wear the mask to go into the wharf, get my food, and get out. You know, I do speak to the transients there. They even say it themselves. You know what? We live here and there's no mandate or no law that we're gonna follow because we live here. And I agree with them. So, um, being a citizen born and raised here, um, and someone who follows the rules and the regulations, no criminal record, I worked for the city and, you know, other of official, um, positions here in my county, I will not follow this mandate. So if I have to pay a hundred, five hundred, a thousand, I guess that's what it's gonna take, but I will not follow the, that law. And if, if it takes me to get a misdemeanor, that's unfortunate because you're making good citizens, um, illegal, you know, committing crimes and that's not, that's not the way to go. I'm sure the chief knows that educating the public is the way to go. So we'll keep educating the public to wear their masks, but I will not agree on the mandate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Patty Spears? Patty, go ahead.
Good evening. This is Patty Spears, resident of Hollister. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Okay, the reason why I am against this ordinance, I think it's absolutely ridiculous and unres, un, it's just unconstitutional when it comes down to that. I've been, I've also spoke at the Board of Supervisors meeting and stated my facts there. We are dealing with something that we all know this has to do with getting money from the state. And so we have to play nice with Gavin Newsom in order to get our pennies, you know, our, our little money. And the thing is realistically, if you let our businesses open back up, you can get your tax revenue. We don't have to bow down to Gavin Newsom. And that's what this is. And that's why he's been so heavy-handed with his executive order pen is just to get people to comply. Now, under, everything under the guise of COVID. Now, as far as people have been behaving, okay, they're using their mask inside stores. I haven't seen it yet and I shop in Hollister often. And, uh, I haven't seen an instance where somebody is not wearing their mask. Everybody's being respectful of everyone else. Now, once I get out of the store, I'm gonna take my mask off when I'm not around anyone, but I don't need a ticket for a hundred dollars or let's say my husband and I or somebody else that we're with getting a ticket each for a hundred dollars. It's absolutely ridiculous. And especially in this atmosphere where we can't work anymore. My business is basically shut down and that's exactly what you're basically gonna do with the remaining businesses that are still hanging non-biased in this city. Also, um, if you go to callexcellexcovid.com, you'll see facts by three different doctors stating that the false positive rate is extremely high, eighty percent. Uh, so I encourage you to go there, C E L L E X covid.com to see those facts. And I'm also opposed to this being a misdemeanor because a misdemeanor falls onto your record. It can keep you from getting a future job, which we all may need very soon. And I'm totally against it. Those are my words. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
April Rial? April, go.
Hi. Hi.
We can hear you. Go ahead.
I'm April Rial. I'm a resident in San Vito County. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I am against mandating masks. I believe that masks encourage a false sense of security and cause division in the community. This is a very, there's a very common misconception that all people have to wear masks. There is not a mandate on a federal or state level, only a recommendation. For some, wearing a mask is not possible. For this part of the population, it is already extremely difficult to go out in public without a mask. We have all seen the viral videos of people being verbally and sometimes physically attacked in stores. And what's worse is that this policing amongst civilians is being heavily encouraged on social media. Mandating masks and handing out fines will only encourage this behavior. If masks were as, as effective as we're treating them to be, every state would already have a mandate. This should not be a county decision. I urge you to vote no on this mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Verdana Freitas?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Thank you. Hey, I wanna commend all the people that called in and spoke so eloquently. I want to bless them and give them grace. I wish I was as great, gracious as they. So of course, uh, I am totally a no on the mask mandate. And the first reason is you have about ninety percent of the people who are already, um, following along with wearing a mask, even though there's no state law, there's no local law, there's nothing, there's no law that undergirds this mandate. It's totally illegal on its face and you, literally on its face, no pun intended. So you already have people following along and now you want to mandate and start imposing fees. And I think that is a mistake. And what I want to do is speak to the people who are listening and the businesses that are downtown. If this mandate passed, you guys are going to be hurt downtown because we're not gonna come down anymore to support your businesses as much as we want to. We just aren't going to do it. And this council will be putting a nail in the coffin of your business. They've already put a nail in the coffin of your business. This will be a second and third nail. Secondly, the corporate businesses like the Targets and Rayleigh's and Safeway's and Aces and Walgreens and all those other things, those businesses are going to be subjected to protests of people coming in without masks. And if they think they're afraid of getting lawsuits from, um, COVID, they should be afraid of getting lawsuits for violating California. they should be afraid of getting lawsuits for violating California Civil Code fifty-one, denying access to their citizens. These corporations will become subjected to that. And thirdly, I wanted to let everybody know, we have a GoFundMe. We have eighteen hundred dollars in it already. And anybody that gets a citation, instead of paying a citation, they're welcome to donate to our fund, and we will be, um, seeking recourse from our local officials. So, if we can get one thousand citizens in San Bernito County to each put in ten thousand, one hu- or ten dollars, that is ten thousand dollars, and we'll go from there. I think we can do it. So, anyway, I just wanted to speak to the people. I'm not interested in speaking to the city council, because I don't think they can be reasoned with at this point. Thank you.
Ryan Jones? Ryan, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Please go ahead.
Hi, this is Ryan Jones. I'm a resident of Hollister, California here. Um, not only am I against completely this, this ordinance that the, the, the council is considering right now, but, you know, I know, you guys know that, I'm sorry to inform you, but this is a steep violation of the people's civil rights and liberties. And you're probably tired of hearing that, but sorry, the truth has a tendency never to go away, right? This tyrannical behavior really needs to end, and you guys can end it now. A vote to implement this is a vote to perpetuate an unlawful order, and would further create greater division into our community that we already know we really can't bear. This would not only, it does not solve anything, period, it really doesn't, it doesn't solve anything, you guys. And I'm sorry, you will be held liable for this. And I want everybody sitting here right now, ask yourselves, what will this really accomplish? Truly, what will it? Are you going to fine, even arrest good-standing citizens? You know, the state just released eighteen thousand prisoners from the jails of California alone because of COVID concerns, which is ridiculous. So what are we going to do? Fill these jails back up with people who either can't wear a mask because of religious beliefs or physical reasons, which no one fails to ask? And that would be an act- actual interesting irony, right? I mean, think about that. How do you plan to enforce such a thing? Do you have the time? Do you have the energy? Where are the resources? Well, I guess we know the resources. We're gonna turn citizens on each other, right? That's always great. Do you wanna police state? Because that's what is becoming here. And be careful what we invite into our community, you guys. As I mentioned, this is a steep violation that is a tough slope to get off once you start walking. So all of you know that such an ordinance is completely illegal to enforce onto the people, and is also discrimination of its worst kind. I highly recommend that this gets removed. Absolutely removed and never to return. It is time to show true innovative leadership, and now is time to feed those people. We are not to follow King Newsom, who will only be remembered for violating the people and acting criminally. He will eventually be moving and forgetting about what he did to California soon enough. Do you want your name on that train as well? So all I say is let's go forward together, let's pioneer the trail back to a place where it's waiting for us, a place of prosperity, harmony for all. A no vote on this, or a complete removal of that is the first step towards that place. Thank you.
Courtney Evans?
Good evening. Hello. Thank you for this time. First, I am calling once again. I think this is the fourth time we've had this on an agenda. This is the fourth time the people are calling to stand up and speak against this. Listen to the people. I request that the mask ordinance be removed from the agenda. I request that you share and be open and transparent with all of this information, all of these meetings that you're having. The city staff, the county staff is threatening and lying to businesses about the enforcement and fines and lawful, um, repercussions that can happen. All meetings of any policy should be open and public, and governed by the provisions of the Brown Act. A meeting is defined as any gathering of a majority of members in order to discuss and carry out the public's business. This is the public's business. You are killing our businesses. You are trying to take away our freedoms. And we, the people, have the right to attend. We attend these meetings to represent ourselves. It is the request to safeguard our accountability of government to the public. Please remember that the principle that secrecy is the antiepical to a democratic system of government of the people, by the people, and for the people. You cannot make decisions, have meetings, request things from city and county, and try to implement without the public's input.
Isn't she inputting right now?
I ask that this be taken off and never spoken of again. Allow the people to live their lives, open up our county, stop following a dictatorship. If you continue to, there's no reason for your position. You're not here to take orders from a public health office or a governor. You are here to represent the people, and you hear our voice tonight. We're out here. You can hear us. And we're not going anywhere. Open our county. Open our county. Open our county. Thank you. Have a good day.
Emily Scow? Emily, go ahead.
Yes, yes, I'm here. Good evening. Um, well, that's a hard one to follow. Thank you, Courtney. I wish I could be down there with you guys. Um, my name is Emily Scow. I'm a lifetime resident of Hollister. Our, our family settled here back in eighteen eighty-eight. Um, I'm calling in tonight to urge you all to vote no on the mask mandate. I'm gonna ask you guys this question, that if you are so concerned with the health of our community, what did you do to protect our res- our restaurant owners and workers that were forced to operate outside for over a month in smoky, poor air quality, with temperatures reaching over a hundred degrees at times? Did you guys push back on our governor, or ask him, or tell him that restaurants in Hollister should be allowed to operate inside during this time? Think about that. Workers forced to wear a mask outside in poor air quality, in the smoke and the heat, in order to provide for their families, and many of which were afraid to speak up because they don't want to lose their jobs. That's the fear that you guys are allowing? That is also not protecting the health of our community. They can operate indoors safely, they can follow guidelines, but you guys are not pushing back on our governor? The president himself said on Tuesday that he does not understand why states such as California and New York are not opening that one. And also, when he was asked if, if he would mandate a mask order, he said absolutely not. You guys are killing our small businesses. I have personally talked to over thirty restaurant workers that have been in tears, that have been crying because of the conditions that they are forced to work in outside in a hot parking lot. And now you're wanting to enforce a mask mandate? I agree with the woman that spoke earlier about, um, driving people away. Uh, when I found out San Juan had a mask mandate, that I had to put a mask on just to walk down the street, I said absolutely not. We are not going down there to eat. That's ridiculous. Um, so, I, I again, I just say vote no on this. We, we are the people that voted you guys into office to be our voice, and these people are saying no. We oppose this mask mandate. And I urge you guys again to vote no. You absolutely, as of tonight's call, you kinda don't have a choice, because all the people have said no at this point.
Lacey Bordet? Lacey, go ahead. Lacey, unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Please go ahead.
My name is Lacey Bordet. I'm a resident of Hollister my entire life. I oppose the mask mandate. It's time to let our community live our lives, open up our businesses. It, it's just time. You, you are doing very much. By imposing all these restrictions, and now you're gonna fine us and give us misdemeanors for, for not wearing a mask? Let us live, let us carry on. You're gonna kill our community, COVID or not. I think it's time for us to go forward. That's all I have to say.
Anna Puffer?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead. Sorry, Anna, start again.
Can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, I'm a teacher fourteen years, and I am now a homeschool mom of six little children. Um, I oppose the mask mandate. I think it is too much government control with too little logic. You can't stand so firm on, um, a mandate like this when there isn't enough science or logic to back it up. For example, um, the CDC on their own website came out with this, and I quote, "Plots of masks that are used to slow the spread of COVID-nineteen offer little protection against wildfire smoke. They do not catch the small particles found in wildfire smoke that can harm your health, limit your outside time, blah, blah, blah." Did you know that wildfire smoke are bigger than virus particles? So basically, the CDC is saying that the masks do nothing against smoke. Oh, but they do so much against COVID. It makes no logical sense. So just look at the logic. There is no logic. There is no truth. Um, and there's so much sci- scientific evidence to show that masks do absolutely nothing and to kill businesses and, um, draw people away from your community when you don't have a hundred percent logic on reasoning behind it. Another example of no logic is, uh, the other day I went into the store, and one of my kids, uh, forgot his mask, the other one's wearing a bandana. Um, so, the, the kid who forgot his mask put his shirt up over her kid's nose, right? And I was told that was unacceptable. We would have to leave the store. What, what logic is that? How is a t-shirt so much worse than a bandana? It doesn't make any sense. There is no logic in this. If you are playing football for, um, a college team right now, if you're tackling each other and smothering each other, you don't have to be wearing a mask, but the second you walk off onto the sidelines, you have to have your mask on. Can you explain the, the logic to me? When you're not tackling each other, and also you've been tested three, four, or five times for COVID-19, but you still have to wear a mask? It makes absolutely no logical sense. And you can't put forward a mandate or a law without any logic to back it, back it whatsoever. Also, people are not washing their hands, they're not changing out their masks. You have to wash your hands for twenty seconds before you even touch your mask. Do you even know anyone who's done that? Can anyone in this room raise their hand and say that they don't touch their mask? No. So what is the point of your mask if it's not healthy, clean, and safe? It's not doing anything for your health. And yet you're willing to force all citizens to wear it outside. My last example is this. I went to Monterey to go play frisbee golf with my family in the middle of nowhere, okay? We were probably ten miles from another human being, and we were not wearing a mask, and...
Thank you, Anna. Your time is up. Thank you. Ri- Rihanna Monk? Rihanna Monk, are you there?
Hi, my name is Rianna Blankenship. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, I would like to say that I oppose this mask mandate, as it will not only cause division amongst the people in our county, and it will also make life more difficult for people like myself who have conditions that prevent us from wearing masks. I foresee having my rights questioned regularly by not only random citizens, but also those who would be enforcing this mandate. Am I to be questioned for proof of my exemption at the door to establishments, or just walking down the street? How many fines will I face daily? I was under the assumption that California citizens are protected by law from discrimination under California Civil Code fifty-one B. This code states in summary that we are all free and equal and entitled to full and equal accommodation, advantages, facilities, privileges, or services in all business establishments of every kind whatsoever. There is nothing written in to say that to receive these rights, we must be masked. I urge you all to vote no on this mandate and to keep our civil rights intact. Thank you.
Olivia Morgan? Olivia?
Hello, good evening. I am also, uh, like the many, uh, folks who have spoken tonight against this mask mandate from the city of Hollister and the county of San Bernito. I have lived here for ten years, and have found just now to be finding a way into this community of wonderful, lovely, heartfelt people. Wearing masks makes for self-righteousness, makes for people to be scared of others, and it is utmost of importance to show our community who we are, as happy, wonderful, happy people with smiles on our face. This mask mandate is unnecessary. The chances of dying from COVID are very small. They continue to dwindle nearly every day. So this is a power rap from our state that is trickling through our community, and we need to show people that we are a freedom-seeking city. We are a, a, a city where people believe in America. This is a citizens' public forum to, to speak as we want to be free, and, uh, thank you very much. Have a nice day.
James Paradiso?
Yeah, hi, this is James Paradiso. Can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
Okay, hi, my name is James Paradiso. I'm a Hollister of, uh, resident of Hollister. You know, I agree with all the others who spoke against this mask mandate. Um, I think it is absolutely, totally asinine that you even think of, you know, something like this. So much so, that it would be irresponsible of you to vote on such a mandate, okay? Um, so if you are listening, there's a lot of pissed-off people, you know, and you say, and you say that you represent the people, and you, and, and if you do, and, and you're not pissed off about the mandate, then clearly you don't represent us, you know, the people of San Bernito County, so that's all I got to say on the matter. Um, I say no. Thank you.
Susan Garcia? Suzanne Garcia?
Yeah, there. Hello?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
So I oppose the mask mandate. Um, I'm opposed to it for various reasons. Um, since when did a mask replace our immune system? A robust immune system is basically what stops pandemics, not a mask. Um, secondly, what about all the people who are being discriminated with health conditions? For example, I'll take my son. He has, and he will throw up. And yet you're gonna force people with health conditions and, um, discriminate against them to go into places of business, or make them wear them all day at work for eight hours, and they're scared to report their health illnesses because they don't wanna lose their jobs? And, and in addition to that, I work with special ed. I can't even imagine all these parents with autistic children who are forcing their children to wear a mask. That is, I just don't see how you guys think this one-size-fits-all is appropriate for everybody. It's a really slippery slope. You guys, you want us to trust public health, however, um, where is all the health warnings that, for example, the new, uh, neurotoxin? Where is, uh, uh, public health to inform us about amalgam fillings and mercury and the off-gassing for people who, uh, you know, have mercury, uh, amalgam fillings? There's so many other, um, public health issues, concerns, our water, um, the air quality. There's so many different things, but yet you feel like COVID and masks is the most important thing that needs to be focused on. And in addition to the mental health issues and people being afraid and isolating themselves, there's so many factors that you guys are not considering and thinking that wearing a mask is gonna solve the problem, and it's not. Um, so I'm definitely opposed to the mask ordinance, and I think you guys just need to remove it altogether.
Kayla Kenny? Kayla, go ahead.
Yes, hi there. Can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
Okay, all right, good evening. I'm a resident of Hollister, and I've lived here for six years, and I'm... and I have always raved about the community here and how much I love it and I have been just so joyful in living here and it's changed dramatically and I'm sure people can say that everywhere they live, but um I just expected differently from our rural county. And to think that we need to force masks on every individual, um, it's just unheard of, it's sad. I mean, I hear people cheering and like, for me, I'm just, I'm almost in tears because I just can't believe this is where we are at. Um, as a people in general, for all of America, but right here in our town, it's just so unexpected. Um, to think that we would fine people for not having their masks, this is just gonna cause so much division. I've already heard of so many friends and family leaving, leaving California. I was just up in Folsom where everybody was running on the trails, separated respectfully, common sense, not wearing the mask. It hurts me when I drive my children and I see an elder person walking and they have a mask on. Does that not hurt any of you that, I mean, am I, I don't know how, nobody else sees this? An older person walking uphill with a mask on? Because probably because they're afraid that either somebody's going to shame them or maybe they even think there's a citation waiting for them around the corner. We can't be living this way. I miss so much the joy that this community used to have. I personally am a stay-at-home mom of four kids and going to the store literally was a vacation for me. Now it is, it's not at all. I mean, I used to enjoy speaking with others at the store and it's, everything has changed and I think that you guys have a position to make a really great difference, to stand up for what is right. And I just hope that you do. I hope that um something tugs at your heart tonight and that you would um see the need that needs to be done here. That's all I have to say, I oppose the mandate if that wasn't clear. Thank you.
Susan Logue? Susan, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, this is Susan Logue, I'm a Hollister resident. I fully support the science behind mask-wearing with social distancing as being a way to protect others and ourselves. It's important to respect those in need of protection due to their specific health concerns. So I support a mask mandate, however, instead of a fine, I would request the people who are in charge would offer masks to those who can't follow or not able to follow the mandate. The science from the nineteen and eighteen pandemic clearly shows us that masks work. But I'd really ask not for a fine, but instead to maybe offer a mask. And if the person can't wear the mask, please show some reason why, as there are, you know, valid reasons why someone might not be able to. I really think this is just temporary until we reach the other side of this terrible pandemic. And I think that people in the community love it here, we all do. And we can be a healthy, social community for us all. But masks are really necessary for us all to live. Citations are not the answer, but discussion with others and offering a solution to them is. Thank you so much for your time.
Kevin Barcellos? Kevin, go ahead.
Hi, Kevin Barcellos from Hollister. Um, just wanted to speak in favor of uh the mandate. I've been uh been speaking at various uh board meetings uh since the pandemic started and uh we hear the same crowd of folks that show up to those meetings every uh every couple of weeks that have shown up tonight. Um, it's an extremely loud minority of folks that are uh fighting what is a very basic common sense mitigation for the for the pandemic. Um, for those that are worried about businesses, the way to get businesses open and get people kind of, you know, back to their old habits is by knocking down the transmission of the virus in the community. And the best way to do that is by everybody wearing a mask. Um, and if we don't have a mandate with some teeth and enforcement, um, the signaling to the rest of the community is that you're not really serious about it. Uh, so uh I would strongly encourage the council to vote in favor of uh the ordinance today and um and again, we just, we, you know, we wanna all get pushing in the in the same direction and uh bring transmission down so that we can uh we can get our kids back to school, get businesses uh operating uh, you know, at at, you know, close to the levels that were pre-pandemic and we, you know, and we save the vulnerable uh populations. Um, we're, we've just seen over the last few days nine additional new people in the hospital. Um, you know, uh over the last, uh just just since Friday. Uh, this is not going away and we need to to get serious about this. And again, I would urge the council to approve the ordinance as we do, thank you.
Heather Casada?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Okay, hi, um, my name is Heather Casada. I just wanted to say that I'm opposed to this mandate. Um, I just wanted to say recently, I've just noticed a lot of businesses going in there. People are just really kinda getting mean to each other. Um, went in today, for instance, GameStop with my boys. The kid there acted like everybody was a giant disease, it was ridiculous. I just feel like this is just getting way out of hand. Um, if you're worried about it, by all means, wear your mask. I think everybody around town's been pretty good about doing it. I haven't seen anybody in a grocery store without one. I mean, we're all doing what we have to do um to get this to pass. But to be honest, I feel like once the masks were mandated for the grocery stores, I feel like our numbers skyrocketed and it may be due to more testing, but I just feel like it's kinda getting a little ridiculous now. So, thank you so much.
I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any comments from council members?
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Lenore.
Okay. Apparently, folks didn't study the California Department of Health Guidelines for exemptions because I keep hearing it. So let's just take a look at the exemptions from wearing a face covering. So those are persons younger than two years old, okay? Persons with medical conditions, mental health conditions, or disabilities that prevent wearing a face covering. Persons who are hearing impaired or communicating with a person who is hearing impaired. Persons for whom wearing a face cover would create a risk to the person related to their work. Persons who are obtaining a service involving the nose or face for which temporary removal of their face covering is necessary. Persons who are seated at a restaurant or other establishments that offers food or beverage service. Persons who engage and pay attention to this one. This is for Celeste. She left, I hope she hears my answer. Persons who are engaged in outdoor work or recreation such as swimming, walking, hiking, bicycling, or running when alone or with a household members. There's no mask required for hiking, running, swimming, walking, okay? So that, that's a moot argument there. The last one, persons who are incarcerated. Okay. I don't know what y'all expect. But on September eighteenth, Dr. Rob- Robert Redfield, the director of the Counters of Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, testified before the Senate stating, "We have clear scientific evidence that mask, mask works and are our best defense." Dr. Fauci followed up with, he's the director of National Institute of Allergy and Infectious Diseases, stated that a combination of an effective vaccine and adherence to certain public health principles will get us to the point where we wanna be. The California Department of Public Health, which the letter is included in the agenda packet, states that the use of face covering by everyone can limit the release of infected droplets when talking, coughing, and/or sneezing as well as reinforce physical distancing because they all work together. It's not just the mask, it's also the physical distancing. So I hear a lot about Placer County. Well, I looked up a few things. And you know, I always like apples to apples instead of apples to oranges. So Placer County has opted to follow the state guidelines, the same as San Benito County. They reverted to the state guidelines. Placer County is under the same tier system that we are. However, Placer County has a positivity rate of three point two and San Benito County has a positivity rate of eight point one. Now, I think we should concentrate on prevention because we are this close, very close, to tier number two. If we drop down those two tenths to a seven point nine and we maintain that seven point nine for three weeks, we will be in tier two and we will be headed to tier three. These, these are solutions. You're not, you're not, you, you, there's performance to get where we wanna be. They, Donna, I just struggle very much and I know economics is important and I know people's livelihoods and their businesses are severely impacted. But when I sit here as a leader, I really have to put the health of the citizens before the economics. I'm so sorry, but this is just my opinion. But I do listen to you. I just don't agree. I listen to everything, I read everything you send me. I don't like the kinda tone sometimes, but that's your, that's your option to to uh talk to me. Um, just a second.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Oh, just a second, please.
Go ahead.
The answer to lowering the positivity rate to get the mask off our face is more people testing. This thing where people think, oh, we shouldn't test, well, that's the problem. You need more people to test, to test negative to lower that positivity rate. That's how you lower it, to get the people that aren't sick to test. So I really encourage everybody to test because maybe all of you folks that are hopefully negative will lower that positivity rate. I reinforce private businesses' right to refuse customers who don't wanna put on a mask. When you wanna pay their workman's comp premium, then maybe it's your call. And if you're so concerned about businesses, you do not subject them to lawsuits regarding workman's comp. Now that's irresponsibility. Unfortunately, people do not always follow laws, ordinances that are enacted. And I see folks, you know, and again, I'm not after those couple of folks that are walking down a sidewalk and they're exempt, number seven exemption. But I could feel it and I know people wanna take those masks off. But you know, sometimes you gotta do what you don't wanna do and that's why we have fines for speeding and shoplifting. And anytime you break the law, it's usually associated with a fine. Education is a great tool, but sometimes it's not the only tool and it's not an effective tool if people are not going to be reasonable. To say, to say that there's no pandemic, you lost me right there. To say there's no two hundred thousand deaths, and you know what, folks? I hope your Nana or your Nanu don't get sick with their underlying diabetes and get the COVID and die because this thing that we have about so cavalier saying they have underlying conditions, guess what? They were living with their heart disease, they were living with their diabetes, they were living with their ailments, but now they're dead because COVID. So I don't like that flippant thing when people say that. I hope that we can come together as a community and work this COVID thing out together. I'm sorry, I have to lead in the best way with scientific information. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lenore.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we do have another person online and a person who walked in to speak. So if I could please just read this real quickly. Um, for public input, it was a time for anyone in the audience to speak. I'm sorry, on this particular matter, um, we're gonna, we, we could speak. Um, each speaker had three minutes with a maximum of thirty minutes per subject. So we have um gone over thirty minutes for this unless council would like to allow um the two, one walked in and one is still um online that wants to speak.
It's up to the council.
I say yes.
I never wanna prohibit anybody from speaking.
Okay, I'm on board.
Shall I do that now?
Yes.
Loretta Avina? Loretta, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you, can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Councilwoman Lenore, thank you. I just wanted to say that I support everything that you said, I too. I'm a firm believer in the science and I was sitting here listening to everyone speak tonight and I was very taken aback. I've been living in this community since nineteen eighty-nine and I was shocked at the selfishness that I heard from our speakers tonight. All I heard was, I, I, I. This, as you said, is a collective uh problem, it is a pandemic. It is not the flu, it is a highly, highly contagious um COVID nineteen, um whatever it is. Uh, for these people to say not wearing a mask, and masks scientifically has been proven to to help stop the spread. For these people that say I can't wear a mask, I have an underlying condition, well, I I hope that you're aware that the ADA does permit a retailer to deny goods or service to an individual with a disability if their presence would result in the direct threat to the health and safety of others. We are not violating your constitutional rights if you are being denied service because your presence is threatening the health of the collective. And that's what it's all about. It's the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few. And it is the few that do not believe in wearing masks and it is highly irresponsible of you to say that. And I was very surprised that I heard a teacher or a former teacher here saying that she does not believe in wearing a mask. Well, I'm glad that she's not teaching my children because that is not a critical way of thinking. It's about protecting others, uh protecting our grandparents, our mothers, our fathers. And like you said, Councilwoman Lenore, it is about working together as a community. I'm not sure that I support fining people, but once I heard about all of the exceptions where you don't have to wear a mask while you're running and swimming and biking, et cetera, then yeah, you know what? If an individual makes the decision of not wearing a mask, specifically when you are going into a business, then fine them. And for those people, there was one individual that said, "Oh, I was in San Juan Batista and I found out that I needed to wear a mask and I didn't wanna walk down there to go eat dinner." Well, shame on you. That is the selfishness that I was referring to. I make a purpose of trying to support one to two restaurants a week, whether it's in San Juan or in Hollister, and I will wear a mask wherever I need to wear one to support those businesses because that is the responsible thing to do. And as you said, this too shall pass, but we must do it all together.
Sorry, Loretta, thank you. Amber Henderson?
My name is Amber Henderson, as stated. I came here in person and um I know that most people can hear me, but they can't see me. I'm not wearing a mask. There's a reason for that. What I came here to speak about is the enforceability of this ordinance, pardon me. As the previous speaker stated, there's a federal and state ADA in place. The California law protects people from being discriminated against. I understand, I've read this ordinance today. It states that there are exemptions. I want to point out a few things. Just getting into this building was extremely difficult, sorry. It was extremely difficult for me. It's because of the way that I looked, it looks like there's nothing wrong with me. This is not a watch. It's a heart monitor. There is a woman in Texas in a wheelchair. A Sprouts manager called, didn't talk to her, called the police because she was not wearing a mask. A little old lady in a wheelchair, didn't have a mask. And, you know, the police came. The owner didn't have the decency, or the, sorry, the manager didn't have the decency to even speak to her. Not that he could have anyways. He couldn't have questioned her, not legally. The police came. The woman was in tears, in tears. Someone's grandmother made to cry. You know what? It's stressful enough for me to go out. Sometimes I can wear a mask, sometimes I can't. I am grateful for people who are trained properly to not discriminate. I was able to walk into Costco one day when I could not wear a mask. Nothing, once I got through the door, not a single person looked at me. It was very difficult for me to go in there because I could get sick. But I need to feed my family. I want to know, in this ordinance, where is it written that where there's training? How do you look at, how do you know if you're finding a business for disobeying the law or doing what they should and not questioning their customers? Please vote no on this. Thank you.
Council, I've had two more people come up. Is it okay to continue? Three more, I'm sorry.
Uh, they repeated speakers or new ones?
New ones.
Well, it's a mayor's call. I mean.
These will be the last three if there's any more evidence.
Okay, after these three, okay. Ben Kofi.
Hello? Good evening, City Council, Mayor. Um, I would also ask that this be removed from the agenda. You want to talk about science, but you want to neglect the mortality rate, which is very small, considering staying in a emergency or classified as peril, extreme peril. I don't think that we've seen any extreme peril demonstrated in our county. Yes, unfortunately, we have seen a loss of life that takes place naturally as people live and die and the world goes around. However, to shame people for either wanting a mask or not wanting a mask, it doesn't make any group of people better than the other. Your plight on contagion is only relevant if the individual is sick, which there's no way of knowing whether somebody is sick or not. But yet you want to put a sickness on somebody so that then they have to wear a mask that's preventing said sickness from other people. But if the individual is not sick, your science is flawed. The recovery rate, the stability within the people recovering hospitalized, you say, or just quarantined. There's many different ways to spin the jewel to see different sides. But we all want the town open. We all want people with needs to have those needs be met, whatever they are, whether they're physical or emotional or spiritual. However, there's a gap in the city where people can't go to find spiritual enlightenment or help or the laying hands on of people for healing. There's been an elimination spiritually from the power of God to heal people and for people to see that manifestation in their lives or in the lives of others. You're neglecting a whole realm of things that you don't have control over. You can't decide who went into a business or whether or not they had a health issue that prevented them from a mask. You don't have the, um, you don't have the things in place in order to citation businesses or people. And there's a list of businesses that have already been cited for masks and a whole slew of other things. But yet was there investigation into the people that went into the establishment and were they exempt? You don't know. You can't find out. So that's on you. Until there's a better replacement of rule and how it's going to be set out, you have no jurisdiction, authority or anything to pass this through. You don't work for the governor, you don't work for the planned pandemic-like health organization, you work for the.
Thank you, Mr. Kofi.
Thank you.
Peter Hernandez. Peter, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, I, uh, Mayor, City Council. I've spoken on this before, I think it's a certain extent, I want to frame it in a way that's gonna make it a lot more relative. You know, I've heard about, you know, from last meeting, the, the failed leadership of the county, uh, from, for, for trying to do this mask ordinance. Uh, and it's funny the way it was framed because it poses, it poses a question, right? For this masks, by default, I'm going to create the perfect environment and the outcome that we want, right? So I guess if we live in a singular world where there's only one issue that everybody ever deals with, uh, then you would, you would assume that that's, that that makes sense. But we live in a world that has a whole lot of variables. And my point is, I don't even have to make that argument as much as our current judicial decision by Pennsylvania, uh, no report, federal court judge, and I've actually been having conversations with the county council about this, where, uh, this judge basically clarified because he tried to frame it as what did it mean to ultimately address the public health in the state of emergency and making sure that you're protecting public health, but nonetheless, you're balancing, and I'm not even going to speak for him, I'm gonna, uh, I speak from his actual opinion that I've been piecing apart. Uh, and it said, "In this country founded on a tradition of liberty enshrined in our constitution, governments, governor and the court have raffled with how to balance the legitimate authority of public officials in a health emergency with the constitutional rights of citizens." So that basically begs the question, uh, do we care about everything of our community or do we just want to focus on one thing? Uh, and so it's okay, we're officially in a day, it sounds like, that we're so focused on this virus and this mask doing its job supposedly, right? Uh, and it's okay to destroy other lives. It's okay to take people livelihoods away from it, it's okay for businesses shut down. Mulligan just went away, there was a lot of other businesses, uh, on their way out. So it's okay to, you know, the suicide rate, it's okay to have a suicide increasing the suicide rate. It's okay for mental health, right? And, and this supposed, it's really more, um, like a placebo, I guess. It makes you feel good, and I've argued this before, I, I, I'm all for protecting public health. But when you're dealing with a mask that actually doesn't discourage six-foot distancing, it actually encourages by default less than six-foot distancing because now all of a sudden you do a bit of much or something and we can hang out with each other right next to each other because this mask is, is a hundred percent foolproof. It's not true and no one can agree with that, no one in this council room can agree with that. But that's exactly what you're doing when you're requiring people to wear masks, by default, you're forcing people to ignore six-foot distancing. That's the reality, that's in and out. But again, so now back to this judge's order. He says, "However good intentions," I think this is probably the biggest element, there's a lot of pieces, but he says, "However good intentions toward a lawful and," which is basically good intention, "and are not alone enough to uphold government action against a constitutional challenge. Indeed, the greatest threats to our system of constitutional liberties may arise."
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
And the intent is good, especially in a time of emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you.
Roxy Montana. Roxy? Please go ahead. Hello? Roxy, go ahead. Hello? Roxy, are you there? Okay, um, we can't get her up, so I, I guess we're done. Thank you.
So at this time, public comment is closed. Was there any other comments from the council members?
Yes, I'd like to. Go ahead, Carol.
We'll go with, uh, Vice, uh, Vice Mayor's counter.
Well, okay, first of all, this council knows how I feel about this ordinance. I'm just going to say that I'm very disappointed in speakers tonight shaming other groups. People have their right to their opinion. They're, just because they don't agree with a certain person or a certain group of people is not because they're selfish or anything. Councilwoman Lenore talked about diabetics. I'm going to tell you all right now, I'm in the high-risk category. I am a diabetic. I've been exposed three times, one right here in this building, and I have yet to get the virus. I'm not making light of this. I understand we are in a, a very serious situation. But I sat here and watched that woman, the last woman that came up to this podium to speak. She walked into this building and she was approached by two different people to put her mask on. She was almost in tears to explain her health problem. That is the problem I have. That is the problem I have with this ordinance. Granted, we can be outside, we can do whatever we want. You're going to have that one person who's going to call the cops and you're going to be pulled over. I don't care if you're walking your dog. I've had a problem with this ordinance from day one. I don't like a fine, I don't like anything. But I really just wanted to say that I'm very, very saddened, um, of the shaming that I've heard tonight from some of these speakers.
City Clerk, may I please mute the, uh, speakers?
Those are all people from outside the building.
Other than, huh, okay. Did we have another comment from Council Hoop?
I do have a comment for, for Lenore, did you want to go first?
Just one last thing, there is, there might be supervisor Hernandez. I believe I stated that it wasn't just a mask, it's also social distancing. It's also good hygiene. It works together. I'm not just talking about a mask here, so, uh, make sure you clarify your statements next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Go ahead, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Uh, just going to reiterate what I said last time. I think it's, it's extremely disappointing and frustrating on how polarized the issue has become. Uh, and I am, I'm very disappointed, not surprised, uh, by the leadership or the position that the county took. But I am very disappointed that we couldn't have made this decision together, in unison with, um, the city of San Juan Batista who led this effort, so, notice to them. Um, basically, I, I like a lot of what the speakers have said. You know, and I just want to give thanks to people that were being respectful and being very professional, um, during, during public comment because this is, it's not an easy decision to, to make or an easy position to be in, period. Um, the people that are mocking and, and sharing and stuff, it's just quite, I think it's quite embarrassing, I'll be honest with you. Um, the woman that spoke about her children being home, that I really appreciate her message and it really resonated with me. And, um, and that puts me in a, in an awkward position. I'll be honest, I've gone back and forth with this because of those things. I really appreciate Ms. Lowe's, Ms. Lowe's, um, statements. But, and I think it was very nice, but I think that there has to be some type of monetary, um, line associated with it if we want to enact some type of ordinance, right? So I really appreciate your sentiment. Um, the shaming, it's going, I see it on both sides, to be honest with you. Like, I guess I'm even doing it right now, right? So I don't know, it goes both ways and it's just, it is, it's very divided. That's the one thing I did not want to come out of the ordinance, especially, you know, neighbors, between neighbors, community members, between community neighbors. Like, people are shaming on both sides. Like, it's just really sad, I'll be honest with you. Um, I guess in closing, I just want to say that if you don't want to wear a mask, then just don't wear a mask. But then don't go to our stores and don't put other people's health at risk, like, just stay home. If you have a serious health condition, then there are alternatives that you can take. Let's be realistic. You could have came to assume, you could send someone else to a store. Like, you can't use that as a... I think that people use those things just because of their political beliefs and it's not fair and it's not right. We have to side with the medical doctor professionals on this one. I, I agree with, I think as Mr. Barcello said, that it's a small minority and a very loud people. We are elected to protect the general public and the majority of the population. I don't think that they believe with what this group believes. I'm sorry, I just don't agree with that. And again, it's not an easy decision come to, but I do fully support and I'm going to have the back logic, you know, doctors and scientists, and I just think that not to do that is extremely reckless and irresponsible. I just got to be very honest with you guys. So thank you to everybody, um, that was professional and, and courteous during speaking. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, sir. Guess I'll, I'll close with, with my comments and, you know, as was said, you know, this is, I think we can all agree on this, a crazy time in our history. Last time we saw something like this a hundred years ago. And I think if we learn from history, we should understand some of the basics that made a difference a hundred years ago. We're fortunate now today to have more modern medicines and different things to try to help with this pandemic, keep people, uh, more people alive. I'm just disappointed that we went from a position early on of working together in our community, having extremely low numbers to the point where, as I've said before, other council members, people in other cities were contacting me, asking how we were doing it. How was it that we were keeping our heart numbers so low? Low enough that we were in the first communities that was able to open again. Open their businesses. I'm hearing many people talk tonight about this is for the businesses or to kill the businesses. I'll tell you, um, the best way to kill the business is have this pandemic spread to harder numbers. Because the reality is, people won't go out. Yes, a few will, we understand that. But the numbers you need to have a successful business, they won't come out. I happen to own a business that would be closed probably a year because of this pandemic. Does it hurt me financially? Absolutely does. Absolutely does, something fierce. But I can't imagine the thought of bringing staff and customers in and taking the chance of then being infected by this virus and something happening to them. I speak to quite a few people that contact me once they get the virus. They want to know what to do, where to go, what hospital to go to. And every once in a while, one of the families that has somebody that's in intensive care will talk to me. And that happened recently again. And I was communicating with a family for a few weeks while their family member was on a ventilator trying to survive this virus. And it's extremely sad to be speaking to a family that's dealing with this. And when I hear somebody say, well, you live and you die and it's hard to live. Oh, no, this person is thirty-nine years old. And to say, well, you know, maybe they had an underlying condition, so that makes okay. It's not all right. Folks, we all have issues. I have lung issues. I take the precautions I can take, not only for myself, but I want to make sure others are protected. Look, this is not about wearing a mask when you're walking around the street. I don't wear one when I walk around the streets. My wife and I, we go walking every night around the neighborhoods. I don't wear a mask, but if I'm going to be around other people, I want to make sure I'm doing my part to protect them and I want to make sure they're doing their part to protect me. Because we don't know, and that's the problem with this virus. But we do know that if we work together, we could actually beat this virus and be done with it and get back to normal life because it is hard on everyone. And we all have to understand it, it is hard on everyone, but the sooner we work together, the sooner we will get through it. This is not a punishment. This is a way to help business owners deal with some people that do not want to wear a mask. This is a way for employees to make sure their employer is required, so they're safer. This is not about going looking over people's fences or pulling you over because you're walking your dog down the street. That's not what this is about. None of us here want to see that. What we want to see is that we're all working together, we're driving these numbers down and we're putting end to this virus. I hope as a community, we can get to that point and we need to get past the other emotions that are involved with this. You just remember, it is a horrible thing to hear. You just remember, it is a horrible thing to hear somebody that's going through this. And when it does happen to a family member, I guarantee you, their response will not be, live and let die. Or better than that, we're humans that have emotions and we should take care of one another. Thank you.
With that, is there a motion on this issue? Item F1?
Okay, I move that we...
I'm sorry, did you make a motion?
I move that we read by title only, wait before reading, and adopt ordinance number eleven ninety-five and any title eight, health and safety, adding chapter eight point zero five of face covering to the Hollister Municipal Code and adopting the California Department of Public Health Guidelines for the use of face coverings to be enforceable by administrative citation.
Thank you, Councilmember Lenore. There's a motion. Is there a second?
I will second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Against?
No.
Motion carries three ones. We will move on out to item F2.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, item F2 is a request for the movement of monies from SLESF fund that was not spent last fiscal year to move it to this fiscal year to be spent this year on the purchase of vehicles, which is what we traditionally have used the SLESF funds for. Do you have any questions?
Is there any questions from council?
None for me.
I'm having a really hard time hearing. I'm sorry. Maybe go to the podium or something. I'm sorry. This happened last time when you were speaking. I'm assuming it's because you're wearing a mask. I'm very sorry.
Yes, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
This ordinance is, resolution is for the movement of thirty-two thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars that were not spent, that were budgeted last year, were not spent. And the moving of those funds to this fiscal year to be spent on equipment and mostly vehicles, which is usually what we spend the SLESF funds on. You have any questions?
Perfect, thank you. Any questions from council?
None for me.
Okay. Do we have any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a motion on this item?
Could you give us just a moment? Councilmember Spencer has just stepped away for a second.
Okay. We can wait for Spencer to come back.
I think that would be right, if you don't mind.
No problem.
Should we take a break?
Want me to go ahead?
Yeah, what?
Christine is advising, we can go ahead. Oh, here she comes. All right.
Sorry, I had to take a call.
Okay, I know. Okay, so.
We'll take a five-minute after this. There is a motion. Is that your motion?
No, I move that we adopt resolution twenty twenty dash one eight eight as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Why don't we take a five-minute break? Sorry, Vice Mayor Spencer. We'll take a five-minute break now. Thank you. Thank you. Is there a question? Jason? No. Thank you.
We're on the next one.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we are ready.
Are we ready to go?
F3.
We're gonna move to item F3.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This is Paul De Silva, the IT Director for the city. This item is to extend my appointment on the CMAP Board of Directors for an additional twelve months. Currently, we're working on reorganizing CMAP. We have a new executive director and some staffing that we're working on with the board, along with renegotiating the franchise agreement, well, not franchise agreement, agreement to cover PEC services with CMAP and the three cities of Hollister, San Juan Batista, and Gilroy. And I'd like to continue and finish those items out. And this also continues the annual stipend of six thousand dollars and also authorizes the city manager to appoint a future staff representative to replace me on the board next year.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
No.
If I could say, you just do an awesome job and I can't thank you enough for the work you do.
Well, that too.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor, and I have no hands raised.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we accept resolution number twenty twenty-one eighty-nine, a resolution of the City Council, the city of Hollister, authoring the City Council to extend the appointment of the Information Systems and Technology Director as staff representative to the Community Media and Access Partnership CMAP Board of Directors to serve term through October twenty twenty-one. Authorizing city manager to appoint future staff representative to the CMAP Board and continue six thousand dollars paid annually to staff representative appointed for service on the CMAP Board.
It's kinda long, sorry.
Leave it on the mask.
It's all the mask.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Motion carries. We'll move to item F4.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, it's Paul De Silva, the IT Director for the city. This item is to implement a cybersecurity system for the city to help in preventing ransomware and breaches from happening on our network. And I have budgeted about fifty-four thousand for this system. And the system will basically scan our network and learn the normal patterns of traffic in and out of the network and across the network. And if it notices anything, an anomaly or anything kind of out of the ordinary, it notifies us. We also get notified from a team of cybersecurity experts that will help assist us in monitoring this system. And also, there's an automated piece of it that actually, if it notices a workstation that's reaching out where it shouldn't be, not only will it notify us and the team, but it'll also have an automated system to block that traffic from that computer, from coming in and out and data going in and out. Again, I budgeted about forty-five thousand, I mean fifty-four thousand for this. And I was able to get the system in at under, a little over seventy-two hundred dollars, under budget for a forty-eight month agreement. And this also includes that, you know, deployment of the system pretty much right away and not paying for it until January first of twenty twenty-one. And again, it includes the Automated Response Module, the cybersecurity team support, and twenty-four active, twenty-four seven proactive threat notification. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer.
Any questions from council?
No. I'll just comment, one short one. I always do like to see the spreading on the, the spreading out into the enterprise fund. So we get a good product and our one-on-one doesn't take the full direct hit, so I was glad to see the funding sources. Thank you, Paul.
Correct. It's split across funds, one-on-one, six-on-one, six-twenty, and six-sixty, which, you know, General Fund, Airport, Water and Sewer, respectively. It's about twenty thousand on General Fund, about six thousand in Airport, and then a little over ten thousand in each, in Water and Sewer.
I like this, that, when it happens like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions from council? Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we accept resolution number twenty twenty-one ninety. And that's all I'm doing. Okay.
They like it too, apparently.
Is the motion carries second?
Okay.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you.
Actually inside the building or are they outside?
They're actually outside the building.
Okay. Move to item F5.
Item F5 will extend the CAL FIRE lease for the air attack base in their current location. It also adds some storage footage for the new helicopter pad for their new Black Hawk helicopter, the best ground team that would be deployed from the helicopter. And it adds some storage area for the helicopter mechanic to store this equipment, tools, spare parts, gear, equipment. We made progress with the new base, and this is a gap measure.
Mike?
So it is not for very...
Mike, this is Paul. Could you maybe try calling in on the phone or something, 'cause you're completely cutting out? Apologize, council?
It's okay. The people need to be able to understand, and us, and us, let everybody online too.
Yeah. So anyone know a good joke?
If my dad was here, he would've kept you entertained, 'cause it wasn't, it'd have been R-rated. That's nothing anymore. He was ahead of his time.
Go ahead, Mr. Campbell.
Unmute, unmute.
Okay. Is this better, Paul? Much better.
Much better, thank you.
Okay, I apologize. Good evening, mayor councilmembers. Item F5 extends the lease for the CAL FIRE air attack base in their current location. It adds some land so that they can build a new helipad for the new Black Hawk helicopter that they're adding to their capabilities. And it includes some storage space near the flight line so that they can store the spare parts, tools, and other equipment associated with that helicopter, near that helicopter. We have made great progress with the new base, getting it constructed. It is now moving. But we do need to pass this as a gap measure so that they can continue to pay us rent at the current location until they can occupy their new location.
Great. Thank you for the update. Is there any questions from council?
No.
No.
Any speaker cards on this item?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we accept resolution number twenty twenty-one ninety-one.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mike.
We'll now move to item F6.
Staff is requesting that we poll item F6 due to the quick turnaround. There just simply wasn't enough time to get everything complete to meet the deadline the staff council made.
Is this, do we need to bring it back to date, sir, or just make a motion to table the item indefinitely?
I would say indefinitely at this point, 'cause we're waiting on feedback from the contractor on answers to some questions. And I don't have a timeline that he's gonna give us that you back.
Thank you. City Attorney, is that the correct motion?
Yes, that's fine, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any questions from council? Is there any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a motion to table this item indefinitely?
I make a motion that we table this item indefinitely.
One ninety-two indefinitely.
May I ask that we withdraw, so that there's no vote?
Okay. Just with, just a motion, we don't need a motion, just withdraw?
A consensus to agree? Yeah. Let's draw, let's draw it. Yeah. I consent to withdrawing.
And I'm sorry, did that need a vote, City Attorney, or no?
No, that's fine. Consensus is fine. Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna move to item F6.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So, for that...
So, for that, this resolution would authorize a public assembly permit at the City of Hollister Municipal Airport for the Hollister Downtown Association for a Light Lights On Celebration Reverse Parade on November twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, uh, twenty twenty, from five-thirty P M to to eight P M. This will, that will be free of charge to the public. And I would like to introduce Omar Rosa from HDA to say a few words on it.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Um, we are proposing, the Hollister Downtown Association is proposing a reverse parade uh for the Lights On Celebration this year. Um, fully understanding how hard this year has been for everyone, the Hollister Downtown Association would like to uh, knew it would be important to provide a proposal for a safe event uh for our residents to end the year. In light of so many council gatherings this year, we propose the following as a way of still bringing our community together safely as we follow the state guidelines for social distancing. We propose to hold a reverse parade the weekend of November twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, from five-thirty to eight P M. In place of our traditional downtown gathering, we propose an event where the parade entries such as floats, vehicles, dancers, decorations are stationary, and the attendings instead, um, and the attendings instead of uh watching the parade from the sidewalk will drive through the designated area in a loop at the Hollister Municipal Airport and view the parade from the safety of their vehicles. All attendees will stay in their car. This will be a no-stopping event with no foot traffic. Cars will drive no more than two miles per hour, and there will be no distribution of any sort from the parade entries. Attending vehicles will be encouraged to decorate their own cars. Uh, parade staff, Hollister Downtown Association staff and volunteers monitor the event for compliance of rules and safe uh safety for all. Attendees will enter through the main entrance, circle around the center loop of the airport, wave to Santa and exit out the same way. For this year with COVID nineteen, the Hollister Downtown Association uh would like to extend a warm, safe, community holiday greeting, and there will be no admission fee to enter the Lights On Celebration. We will happily um and safely accept canned food or toy donations for our community. At the end of the celebrations, volunteers will hand out candy canes in a swag bag using lawn sticks for safety to each of the vehicles. In addition, we will safely monitor uh monitor tradition of the Deca Tree Project, both at the Vets Plaza and the airport, following social distancing guidelines. Thirty or more trees will be decorated by the community members and will be donated to San Vino family, uh, San Vino County family members in need. The downtown business associate, uh, businesses will be included in the festivities with contests for best decorated window. The City of Hollister will hang uh the garland and the Hollister Downtown Association will put a wreath in the downtown area. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions from council?
I have a question.
Yes.
I wonder, I have total respect for HDA. Did you all discuss?
Mike, can?
Oh, it's on, it's on. Did you tell me if this would be not good, but you know how they're doing the drive-through food? And I'm talking about money for not making nonprofits earn some money. I wondered if you could consider or maybe discuss between now and then. Maybe you would have some food vendor that you could drive by and similar to what they're doing at Balado Park with the carnival food. I'm just saying as a way for a nonprofit to uh make money. I don't know if it's feasible, uh, but I'm just throwing that out there, uh, to your organization.
And we were looking with that with the uh county and just check out its guidelines on that and how that would work. But that was something that we were considering and having a couple of vendors out there just to sell.
So you might, maybe, maybe not.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wondered. I thought of that idea.
Sorry about that.
I just wondered if anybody considered doing that as a way of maybe your organization making some funds I know you so desperately need because all your events are canceled. So if there's any way you can capitalize on that, you should.
Yes, and and like I said, we're definitely looking into that option, but we just mainly want to make sure that we provide an an event, a community event for the, for the, for Hollister and San Vino County.
And I thank you for bringing, bringing this creative thing I've never heard of.
Yeah, we, uh.
I had to look and see what is that? So now I know.
Yeah.
Took a few readings.
If, if you look at uh Basona Lake, I believe in Los Gatos, they do this similarly every year, something like that. And then we were inspired to by a fourth.
I never leave Hollister, so.
Yeah.
Not lately.
Any other questions?
No.
Oh, go ahead.
Councilmember Resendez? Thank you. Um, Omar, I just want to give you guys, I want to extend my gratitude to your board and to um Cory, your staff, and to Jen. You guys have really been great partners through the pandemic. I gotta be honest. You guys um stepped up and you pivoted in in means of the farmers market. And I know you guys have lost the revenue for having a council event. But I, I just want to extend my gratitude. You guys have done a phenomenal job. I've been at Basona. I think that this has the potential to take off. Um, like, like uh Councilmember Lenore said, like, if you could just partner with everybody, you know, hang in there. We support you guys. We really appreciate you going above and beyond, um, just like our rec department is to accommodate and keep these community traditions alive. So, um, thank you again. Please extend our gratitude to the board. And Cory has been just a blessing, absolute blessing. So thank you guys so much for all you're doing. Appreciate it.
That's very appreciated. Thank you. And yes, Cory has been amazing through all of this. So thank you so much for those comments.
Omar, I do want to thank you also. I I just am so impressed how you guys came up with this and you, you saved the Lights On Parade.
You saved Christmas.
I can't thank you enough. Really is something that means a lot to our community.
It's a popular event.
You guys have really excelled on this one. And as Roland said, you know, thank all, everyone at the HDA for for doing this and all the volunteers because, as you know, this is something extremely special for our community. You guys are just awesome. So thank you so much. Do we have any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we accept Resolution number twenty twenty one ninety-three.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Thanks for waiting.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Uh, my name is Maria. I am the Cannabis Affairs Manager of the City of Hollister. And the item before you tonight is for the approval of a cannabis delivery regulatory permit for Hollister Holistics Two. The City Council approved Resolution twenty twenty dash one five nine cannabis use permit slash development agreement at the City Council meeting on August seventeenth of twenty twenty pursuant to ordinance eleven seventy-nine, section five point four-two zero four-zero issuance of a regulatory permit is subject to the approval of the City Council. This approval will allow the applicant to commence operations contingent upon all conditions of approval being met. Uh, tonight's staff is recommending that the City Council adopt a resolution approving a regulatory permit for Hollister Holistics Two to operate a cannabis delivery facility at eighteen oh two, eighteen oh two Shelton Drive. If there are any questions for staff, I am available.
Is there any questions from council?
None for me.
None.
Do we have any speaker cards on this item?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor. Oh, wait, I have one hand up. Carl Sailing. Carl, go ahead.
Hello, City Council Mayor. Uh, thank you for continuing the City Council meetings on Zoom. That's very convenient and um much appreciated. Thank you for that. My name is Carl Sailing. I'm CEO of Hollister Cannabis Co. I'm also the CEO of Hollister Holistics Two. And I'm speaking today to urge you to approve Resolution number twenty twenty one ninety-four approving a regulatory permit for Hollister Holistics Two to operate a cannabis delivery facility. During these times, as many people, there are many people that would prefer not to be potentially exposed to COVID nineteen and would prefer a safe and sanitary experience. Um, we will have very strict protocols on how we deliver to the residents of Hollister. We will sanitize every order before leaving our facility. And our drivers will do a complete sanitation process after every delivery, ensuring, you know, that we can do a uh, a COVID-free experience. We'll also have special programs for veterans, the elderly and disabled residents of Hollister so that they can all access cannabis safely and reasonably priced. Apparently, there's not an official Hollister delivery service, and we would be very proud to be the first company with that honor. And I thank you for your support. Thank you very much.
I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we accept Resolution number twenty twenty one ninety-four.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, four oh. We are going to move to item G one, reports from City Council members regarding their committees.
F nine? Our, yeah, F nine?
F nine.
Is it F nine? Oh, darn it.
So, but I know what you're thinking. F nine, nine applicant has asked for that, this item to be withdrawn.
Indefinitely?
If I can sense this, we could.
Indefinitely?
My understanding, Councilmember.
I do have one speaker.
We do have a speaker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Anthony Lombardo.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Anthony Lombardo. Just to make sure that uh our request is correctly described, we haven't asked if the matter be withdrawn. We've asked it to be continued to the, your next hearing, which I believe is October fifth. So uh that's what we would be requesting you do this evening.
That's good to know.
Good.
Very important information. Thank you, Mr. Lombardo. Any other speakers?
Speakers, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Any comments or questions from council? Is there a motion?
I'll, I'm. That we, I'm sorry, I'll move that we move Resolution number twenty twenty dash one ninety-five to a date certain of October fifth.
Thank you. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lombardo, for uh letting us know that. We'll move to item G one, reports from City Council members regarding their committees. Councilmember Lenore?
I, I do have a couple of reports, but I'm not quite uh finished preparing them. So if you'll allow me to address my two committee assignments of Ambeg and AAA at the next meeting, I will do that. Thank you.
Absolutely, no problem. Uh, Vice Mayor Spencer?
Um, I have no reports from any of my uh committees.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Resendez?
I do have a report. Um, as Mary Gilbert had stated earlier, um, COG went ahead and approved two hundred and forty-one million dollars. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I'm stealing your thunder just a bit.
Yeah, go ahead.
I didn't get to speak there um very much, but I felt, I just want to share with everybody that, you know, Highway twenty-five has been approved. It is going to be widened. Um, I was really honored to be a part of COG, the time that I've been sitting on there. But I think we really need to recognize all of the COG members, all of the staff, all of the previous councils, all of the city staff and county that's been working on it for years and years. I think it's one of the most monumental times for items that we have, especially during these times with all the frustration with the traffic and whatnot. So I'm, I'm very optimistic. I'm very honored and proud to be on the COG. But I just want to make sure that we share that um with everybody that's been involved over the years, all the previous COG members and whatnot. So, thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. I just want to expand on that. I I do echo everything you're saying. It's, this is the biggest project in San Vino County's history. And it, it, it has been a challenge to get this Highway twenty-five widened to four lanes. So I do want to start by uh thanking a few people early on that were there early in supporting this effort. That was Supervisor Jaime Dela Cruz and Councilmember Victor Gomez that uh worked hard with me to keep lobbying Caltrans, the other supervisors, council members, and eventually the public to uh believe in the need to widen Highway twenty-five. It's no small task. It's a, a major project. Uh, all the early estimates of what it would cost were blown out of the water, and eventually the, the dream highway was closer to three hundred and fifty million dollars, which we do not have. So we worked to create a project through sessions with engineers, Caltrans. We spent quite a bit of time finding a way to make this thing happen. We finally came to a uh consensus of what, what we can do and keep it within the range where we can actually get the project done. That's a two hundred and forty-one million dollar project. It's exciting. Let me tell you what it is. It is four new lanes from San Felipe. Just past, that, that four new lanes would be just south of the existing highway. Um, or if you look, uh, just over that hill there, it will go past uh one fifty-six. There'll be a new interchange there. One fifty-six will be over the twenty-five. And at about Hudner, the road will then merge with the existing road. And two new lanes from that point will be built in the northbound direction, just north of the existing highway. All the way to the county line, over the tracks, over the river, to the uh balsa. It is an amazing thing they came up with here to make this thing work. Uh, the existing two lanes will be the southbound lanes from that point. So we're still working with the VTA and Santa Clara County, as I mentioned earlier. They're going to do their widening project or their new exit at the one-on-one twenty-five. That'll be an exit with two lanes to stage the cars coming up, fuel to controlled intersection, going over a new overpass be built just north of the existing one. So all these projects together have finally come, come true, and it's been a long struggle. But as Councilmember Resendez mentioned, a lot of people worked on this for several years to make this happen. And at the end of the day, it was the public that finally supported it in two thousand and eighteen that is going to make this thing happen. Now, there's a lot of work to do still, environmental studies, design work, property rights, and then of course, construction. This is still going to take a while, but it is finally a done deal, and it's going to finally happen. So thank you to everyone that was involved. That's all council members, all supervisors, all the staff at COG, Caltrans, VTA, so on. So thank you all. Big, big deal here. So thank you. With that, we're gonna go ahead and move to uh information reports from City Council. Councilmember Lenore, do you have anything?
I just want a quick one. I'll, I'll let you know that my ongoing issue of the Hollister parks continues. I'm met with a property owner up on uh, our jail. We're gonna go out there and hopefully Brett will accompany me. I have a staff member who will, who'll check out the mess that's kind of scattered throughout the whole property in the nooks and crannies. And we'll see if Brett will help staff do, uh, give some resources to clean it up. And uh hopefully we'll have a discussion next month on, on this issue. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Councilmember Lenore. Uh, Vice Mayor Spencer?
Um, yes, I do have something that I want to bring just for transparency. Um, I've been getting a lot of emails and uh text messages about uh my voting on all these thousands of homes that I've voted on since I've been on council for the last two years. So I requested some papers. So I have it right here. It's documented. City has it. Um, as of January of two thousand and eighteen to August twenty twenty, four residential developments, um, okay, let me rephrase that. Since January of two thousand and eighteen to August of twenty twenty, this council, this council that I sit on has not voted for one housing development. In two thousand, in February of two thousand and eighteen, the previous city council voted in ordinance amended to municipal code, chapter seventeen point twenty-four point two-five-oh pre-zoning of specifically described real property. That was a hundred and ninety-two single-family homes and thirty-five apartments. As of, let me get to my paper here. Total for two thousand and eighteen entitlements, nine residents, nine residential developments consisting of four hundred and fifty single-family homes, seventy-eight multifamily apartments, thirty-nine townhomes and twenty-two condominiums. These are entitlements. These are not developments. Total for two thousand and nineteen entitlements, six residential developments consisting of four single-family homes and fifty-four multi, multifamily apartments. Total, two thousand and two entitlements through August twenty twenty, four residential developments consisting of zero single-family homes and thirty-five multifamily apartments. zero single-family homes and thirty-five multifamily apartments. All these are pre-zoning and they're through the Planning Commission. I just want to make it very clear to this community that I, myself, and I can only speak for myself, I have not voted for thousands of homes or new developments in this community. We don't have any new developments, we have old developments that are still being brought forward and they have to be done because of a good faith system that we have. So I just want to make it very clear, I know that a lot of this is political. People put it out there because they're, you know, this side, that side. It doesn't matter, this is not political, we're not out here, I'm not out here trying to run for mayor, because I'm not running for mayor. That was also brought out, the reason I didn't, I decided not to run for mayor, so the community knows is because my family and I talked about it and we decided it's not the right thing for me to do at this time. So I just want to clarify that too, because it was out there in social media that my developer friends chewed me up and spit me out. Which I don't know where that came from. But, um, just want to make it very clear, this council that I sit on has never, has never voted in a development as of yet. So just wanted to make that clear. You're welcome, Carol.
Thank you, Councilmember Resendez?
I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you. City manager?
Yes, I'd like to, uh, let council know that I have had a few meetings with the county. We are continuing to work on the commercial property tax agreement, uh, that was given direction to, to work on. We are still moving forward on the parklet program, we were still waiting for some traffic study, but we're, we hope for it to be there soon. And then, uh, uh, one thing that I'm sad to say is that we lo- lost a, a great partner at the, the county, uh, the RMA Director, Harry, um, Mavruj, Janis, sorry, because his last name's always been a hard one for me. Uh, so I would like to ask that we adjourn in memory of, of Harry this evening, Mayor, and that's it for myself.
Yes, sir. Thank you. City attorney?
Thank you, no statement, Mr. Mayor.
Chief?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to share with, uh, the council that, um, there is a legislative mandate for racial profiling update training for law enforcement. And, uh, with all the COVID, um, the, the training has been really hard to, to, uh, to obtain, a lot of it's been canceled. But Lieutenant Eric Olson, in his due diligence, contracted or discovered that the Los Angeles County Regional Training Center is offering that training. And actually, this Friday, we're hosting a training here, uh, with surrounding police departments are going to also attend to satisfy this requirement for, uh, recognizing implicit bias. So, um, we're going to be able to train the, almost the entire police department and it's all for free. So I want to thank Lieutenant Olson for working on this, he's been working on this for over a month and a half. So we should be able to satisfy, satisfy all the requirements and, and stay up to date with, uh, with the, the, the racial profiling updates that are required. So special thanks to Lieutenant Olson.
Thank you, Lieutenant Olson.
Great job, great job. Uh, city clerk?
I have nothing to report.
Thank you, we'll move to item G three.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, good evening, can you all hear me?
Yes, we sure can.
Very well, thank you. A little extra excited that I just found the Raiders, the Raiders one.
All the Raiders.
Oh, no!
Sorry. Um, Abraham Prado, Planning Manager with the Development Services Planning Department. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak on the update of the general plan progress. Uh, since the council's selection of Placeworks, uh, this year, earlier this year in February, just want to let you know that, uh, staff meets in a weekly basis via Zoom, uh, sometimes even more than, uh, twice uh, or more, uh, per week. And, uh, we, we just, we're working away, getting things done. And, um, uh, it's, it's been really good to work with them, they're, they are really knowledgeable, they really know their, their, um, uh, uh, update of the general plan, uh, statutes and, and policy. And so it's, it's really, it's been really good working with them. Um, as you know, the general plan, uh, update, the general plan policy is a, um, community document, um, from, for the community, by the community. And so it's very important that, that, um, we gather a really good policy for the next twenty years for our precious community. Uh, as you know, this policy is going to be for, from twenty twenty-three to twenty forty. And so we're, we're making headways and, and I'm going to address a little bit about what, what we're doing so far. Um, as you know, we did have the four visioning workshops from, from June through July. And, uh, very, very good feedback that, that we received. I, I touched upon it a little bit last month. Uh, we will be addressing and being more specific on, on all the outcome of the information that we receive from the community uh, at the next general plan advisory committee, which is scheduled for October sixth, um, at, at, through Zoom. So, uh, we wanted to make sure to let the whole entire council know that the next GPEC meeting is going to be October sixth. And we will be sending out, we haven't sent out the agenda or, or sent out public notice on that yet. We wanted to make sure that the council was the first to know that that is where, um, that's where we're going to have Tuesday, October sixth, our next general plan advisory committee meeting. Um, currently, the city staff is working with the consultant to finalize what is, uh, referred to as existing conditions reports. The existing conditions report is a baseline document for the environmental, uh, impact report that we will be preparing for the update of the general plan. It's really important, it's really, really detailed, we spent, we have spent a lot of time in it. And that's because we're looking at all the various aspects of the environmental impact report, including ag, agriculture and forestry, land use planning, um, the economic, economic development, um, aspect of it, biological resources, arts, cultural and tribal, population housing, um, and, and the economy. Uh, we haven't gone the transport, transportation and circulation yet, there's a few others that we'll be receiving pretty soon from Placeworks. But the ones that we have received so far, today, we sent our comments back to Placeworks and we will be addressing some of them are in our next general plan advisory committee meeting, October sixth. And the next round, we will be, um, finalizing those exist, existing conditions report on the following general plan advisory committee meeting, which is tentatively scheduled either for late October or mid-November. We are working, uh, with, uh, right now the GPEC and staff to try to finalize the date. And very important with Paul as well, since he's been very instrumental when it comes to, uh, making sure that we have our, uh, meetings, um, through Zoom and so forth. So we, we will be setting those dates and, and, and we'll get back to you at that time. And so this is really, really important because we, with the existing conditions reports on every, all of these sections through, uh, through CEQA, we are, we are realizing what our existing local, state and federal policy is and what types of potential goals and policy we want to include for our document for, for the general plan essentially. So, so, um, really important that, that we get good feedback. And eventually, this will be presented to you, council, for your, for your direction as well. Uh, just, just very simply, existing conditions report for ag and forestry, we'll talk about, um, the policy in regards to converting existing farmland to, um, other uses. And so therefore, um, we'll include the policy that we have today in regards to the State Department of Conservation, for example. And then we can look and see, um, if we want to incorporate a policy as a local jurisdiction to, for example, if somebody wants to come in and do a development, then maybe have for a transfer development credits. Say that if we are going to look into converting, uh, prime farm, ag land, if, if that's an option, then maybe we can have the developer, uh, be able to reserve the same acreage of land or more in the county in perpetuity. That's what we see that others, county cities have, we've actually done that in the past. It's not a policy that we have here in the, in the city, but we've done that as practice. Um, other things that we can look at as well in regards to that, so it's, it's really important that, that we, um, that we analyze this and, and, um, we're working really diligently for this. Um, the other, the other main aspect that we're working on is the, um, vacant land inventory. So we're looking at the whole city of Hollister and its planning area, looking not only on, for vacant parcels, but also parcels that are partially developed to see what is the opportunity that we have for the future to correctly designate the, um, parcels, to provide them a, a, a correct land use for, for each of these parcels. And to see what opportunities we have for housing, commercial, industrial, economic development. And, um, you know, we'll be getting the original housing needs allocations coming up, probably within the next year and a half or so for our next cycle. So that, that should help us see where we can accommodate future, future growth potentially, um, within the next, within the next few years. Those are the things that we have been really focusing in on, uh, lately. Uh, this concludes the report, I would be glad to answer any questions if there are any, uh, questions. And, um, I appreciate your, your attention to this matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update, is there any questions from council?
I wonder, I wonder Abraham, are you taking advantage of the new, is it Senate bill or Assembly bill that passed, who's saying that you're able to rehab, rehabilitate defunct little strip centers or large stores that are no longer in business? There's a whole, uh, opening up of rezoning.
Yes.
Rezoning of defunct commercial centers. So hopefully guys will, will, will align yourself, I believe that passed the appropriations and everything, it's probably gonna be available to us, uh, uh, maybe, uh, your consultant will research that.
Thank.
But it would be a great tool to study.
Thank you, Council, Councilmember Lenore, sounds like a redevelopment type of, of, uh, potential law that came in, so absolutely. Very well, absolutely, thank you for that, thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, thank you so much. You're welcome. Yes, yes.
Thank you. HIJ caters no business, so we're going to, uh, ask to adjourn in the memory of Harry Manny Jaris. And last time I spoke with Harry was on Thursday night as we were approving Highway twenty-five. And for those of you that don't know, Harry was very involved in the project, brought in a lot of ideas, sat with me for several days as we worked with the engineers. And I think, uh, all of us together really made that difference. And I really wanted to send up my condolences to his family, very good man, and we're going to miss him. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
I move that we, okay, I was going to expand on it a little.
Go, you do it.
Okay, I move that we, I move that we adjourn, uh, this meeting in memory of the San Diego County's Resource Management Agency Director, Harry Mavrogenis.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you everyone, and good night.
Good night.
Bye, everybody, thank you.